I think, but you have to be able to see each one. It's so different, but I don't question that. No, so that's like.
Wait till it's early days off, just every six. Oh, is it getting? I didn't realize.
Like to call to order the township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Wednesday, January 15th at 7:00 PM. We'll call Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel.
Here.
Commissioner Haggas.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Zona.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
President Etwood.
Here.
Ask if you're able to, to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the opening prayer by Pastor Nick Poole from Calvary Church.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow your heads? Lord, we thank you for this wonderful township. We thank you for the leadership that is here, the resources you've placed under our governance, and we pray that you would give wisdom to every person, Lord, that leads this township. And God, you would continue to bless us, that we could be a blessing to others around us, and God, that we could be a beam of light and hope to our county and region. In Jesus' name, amen.
At this time, we have a special presentation by our Parks and Rec Department.
Another holiday season has come and gone, which means another Deck the House contest has concluded. I would like to thank all of the North Huntington Township residents who submitted their home decor for our 2024 contest. There is no doubt that all of the houses submitted were decorated beautifully for the holiday season. However, since we are dealing with a contest, the judges did have to pick winners of each award despite all of the amazing decorations of every entry. At this time, I would like to take a moment to recognize the winners of each ward of North Huntington Township. As each winner is announced, we would like to invite you up to receive your certificate and prize from your respective commissioner. Commissioners, if you don't mind, we would love for you to present the certificate and prize for each of the winners of your awards. For award number one, we have the Glagola family at 1260 Holly Street. For award number two, we have the Kelly family at 9236 Barnes Lake Road. For award number three, we have the Jaska family at 451 Peregrine Drive. Unfortunately, for award four, we had no entries. For award number five, we had the Gallata family at 1683 Bernice Drive. For award six, we have the Ulias family at 12938 Carlson Drive. Apologies, it's Ulias. And for award seven, we have the Les Nicky family at 70 Old Jack's Run Road. Thank you so much to everyone who entered the contest, and congratulations to the last year's winners. We cannot wait to see all of the great decorations again this year.
Thank you for that. At this point, if anyone would like to sign, anyone would like to offer citizen input, ask you to sign the book at the podium. Just like to acknowledge, the Board of Commissioners had an executive session on Monday, January 13th, to discuss personnel and legal matters. Our first resident is Dawn Lewandowski. Ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, my name is Dawn Lewandowski. I live at 1378 Robyn Station Road. I don't want to take up much of your time. I just want to let you know I've been coming to your meetings here. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to a school board meeting. And I want to ask you guys, I know I've seen Rich Gray and Fran at the school board meetings, and I was wondering if there's a way that we could go ahead and get one of you guys over to the school board, have the school board regularly attend here? Because there seems to be some discrepancies with what's being built and what the school could handle. And I just think it would do all of the community a great service if you guys would actually show up to each other's meetings. That's all for tonight. You guys have a good night.
Our next resident is Bill Benno. Ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, I am Bill Benno at 860 Castleview Drive. Regarding the Roden project, I spoke to you last week with our concerns about the inaccurate and misleading safety study that was submitted in the project application, and that the study was inaccurate, misleading, and did not represent the actual traffic and safety impact in the area. The application's safety checkoff boxes are thus incomplete, and the project should not be approved. Another issue I wanted to hear for consideration is one that has been mentioned but not adequately defined in the months that we have been discussing this project. The developer has mentioned on numerous occasions that an access road from Bushy Run cannot be considered doable because the elevation change of 60 feet is too steep and not practical as being possible. I and two other gentlemen here this evening revisited the proposed Lindenwood access Sunday and hiked to the top to view the area. It dawned on me that no one had measured the elevation difference on this hill. The road travels steeply upward, then runs slightly before flattening at the top, then continues to climb off to the left. At the point of rounding, I measured the elevation with GPS application on my cell phone and noted that the elevation change was 96 feet. I then went home, used Google Earth on my computer to measure its elevation data. And when you use Google Earth, you have to be careful because if you run the cursor on there, you're going to hit the tops of the trees. So I picked the areas that were actually at the bottom of the trees at the top of that slope. And so that elevation change was 90 feet at the same point, and then began to increase away from the crest. Using two different satellite data resources for the same location, we see similar results. So how is it that an elevation change of 90 feet minimum is more desirable than the one of 60 feet reported as not being doable? That's an elevation increase of 50% compared to the Bushy Run access proposal. I also wanted to know what the slope of that Lindenwood access is because it is visibly steep. So I went out Monday afternoon with my Bushnell rangefinder and shot measurements from the base of the hill to the top. We know from trigonometry that knowing any two sides of a right triangle will allow us to calculate the other side and associated angles. So using the minimum of the 90-foot value from Google Earth and the measured slope length, the angle of the Lindenwood access is a 34.5 degree slope. And assuming that the horizontal or the base of the triangle in the same area for the 60-foot Bushy Run elevation change, that associated slope is 22 degrees. For comparison, 22 degrees, Bushy Run, Lindenwood, 34.5. 22, 34.5. Now, on safety, quickly. On Saturday, we had the break in a snowstorm, and my neighbor boy and his friends were out sliding in their backyard, which is the same hillside as that Lindenwood access. And so their kids were sliding down there, having a good time. And then Sunday, we went out there, and the children at the bottom of Lindenwood across the street were doing the same thing on their slope. So let's envision something here. Let's say that the project is now approved and completed. Fresh snow has fallen. An enterprising youngster sees a perfect opportunity for fun and decides to slide or toboggan down that Lindenwood road before the snowplow has arrived. Now, he gets to the bottom, and he stops three different ways. The first way, he slides down a hill, he travels through the intersection, goes across the road, and up the steps in the front doorstep of that house. So he gets a minor injury. The second incident, he slides down Lindenwood, it hasn't yet been plowed, and maybe because it's even too steep. But the intersection was just plowed and salted by the township. The sled stops, but he doesn't. He just earned himself a trip to the hospital emergency room. Let's take it a step further. Similar scenario down there. The kid's traveling down, and there is an automobile traveling, as usual, 10 to 15 miles over the 25 mile speed limit on that street. He might be slaloming the different vehicles that are parked on the sides of the road. So what happens? The kid goes through the intersection. He T-bones the car, or the car T-bones him. He earns himself a trip to the hospital, or to the funeral home. You just created a "I told you so" moment. Is this far-fetched? Has never happened? He knows well as I do that if there's an opportunity, somebody's going to take that challenge, and something's going to happen. So let's go back to the safety requirements checkbox. I mentioned that they were incomplete and not properly taken care of. If in your, 10 seconds, if in your clear conscience you will find this project desirable and in fact approve this project tonight to avoid any future confusion and debate, I suggest that you take the safety requirement and its checkbox and remove it from all future project applications. Thank you for your time.
Our next resident is Ken Planko. I ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Ken Planko, 900 Castleview Drive. As we, as you know, my fellow neighbors and I have been coming here to all the meetings for the Planning Committee and Commissioners' Board for the past year and a half to express our concerns and thoughts and opinions concerning this road and development. I am here this evening to remind you of everything we are still concerned about, should this road and development be approved. As I asked before, I ask that each and every one of you on the board, please put yourself in our position. Why would you want our yards to be flooded by the water runoff because of these elevations that were just explained right now? Why would you want our basements of people that have been living there for 25 years or more to be flooded? We have all told you once, and to tell you again, we cannot get flood insurance. Why would you want our neighborhood to be subject to a tremendous amount of extra traffic coming through Altman Farms, especially down 5th and Castleview, because there is only one way in and one way out of this Roden plan? When cars are parked on the road, it is hard to maneuver around too and to see what is coming. How are all the big construction trucks going to maneuver and handle this situation? Vehicles are running stop signs and speeding, especially at 5th and Altman, as this road is used as a throughway from Route 993 to First Street. Why would you want to create a hazard for schoolchildren by adding another bus stop on a double cul-de-sac, making it difficult, if not possible, to safely turn a bus around? I believe someone spoke to the fact that there is a law that a school bus cannot pick up and drop off children at a bus stop in a new plan until it is 90% complete. The kids cannot walk to a bus stop if it is more than one mile away. So how are all these kids going to get to and from the current bus stop at Altman and 5th Street? That is over a mile on this new plan. The bus stop at 5th and Altman is congested with cars and kids when they are dropped off and picked up. With the extra traffic, this will make it even more dangerous. The bus stop at 5th and Altman is congested with cars and kids when the kids are dropped off and picked up. With the extra traffic, this will make it very dangerous. Why would you want to endanger our neighbors who are constantly walking, constantly jogging, riding bikes, and walking their dogs? Because we have no sidewalks, we have no streetlights, especially in the evening when it's dark, and in the mornings when kids have to walk to the school bus. Like I mentioned, we have no streetlights, and it is pitch black those times of the day. Add snow and ice to the roads first thing in the morning when the kids are walking to the school bus before the snowplow and salt trucks come into our plan. Vehicles are large. Construction trucks cannot stop on an icy or snowy road. Why would you want someone to get hit, or injured, or die? Why would you want to endanger our children who are always outside playing in their front yards and driveways? It's already a challenge to go for a walk or jog because of the amount of traffic on the streets. We cannot afford to add more traffic. This is an accident waiting to happen. Why would you want to be the individuals responsible for letting this happen? I also want to remind you that we are the people who elected you to be our commissioners, to advocate for us, and to be our voice, to make the best decisions to keep us all safe. We are all asking you to please stand up for us and not let this development go through. Please do not let the threat of a lawsuit persuade you from doing the right thing. Lastly, can you please answer the question for all of us as to why the Ryan or the Schuster Plan didn't get built on this land? There has to be a reason, and I'm sure all of our concerns that we have brought to your attention factor in. Please, vote no, and do not let Moronda build the new Roden development. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next resident is Rich Keenan. Ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rick Keenan. I live at 700 Legar Road. First, two items I have here, but the first item, living on Legar Road, you know, is the forgotten road when it comes to the state for maintenance, sand, snow removal. And I want to give a handout to our road department because when I came out later on the road the other day, it was all snow-covered, Route 30 was snow-covered, yet I passed both Mack and Convenient Road, and they were wet. And I look out my window, I can see Naverie Hill, and it's wet. So we got one hell of a road department. Now, for the second thing, I am in favor of an oversight committee, which only two of the commissioners are in favor of, but it, I think it must be an independent and cannot be one of the commissioners or a township manager. You can't very well have the same people getting a paycheck to the ones they would be criticizing or reprimanding. Now, I have had a problem that, with a police officer, and over quite a period of this time, for both trespassing and defiant trespass. And I went to that officer supervisor, and they backed up the officer. Afterwards, I had a problem with an extortion plot, which I can't get into the fine details because it's in the DA's office. And one of the things that was written up by one of our good, well, a team of four of our good police officers here in North Huntington, and one of the big charges was defiant trespass. Now, the, this, the case is still going before, two of the victims are, one has been tried, and he got one to three years. The other one is an illegal, and he is holding up till it goes through. But as far as the details, I can't say too much about it. But I think we need an independent to oversee this thing as far as some of the things that some of our police are doing. And they should be held to the same rules as everybody else. And it was a personal thing when it started, and this has been going on for 32 years since the first problem. And as I said, I went to the supervisor, the supervisor sided with them, but yet when I talked to the DA's office, they just smiled and shook their head. So that tells you something. Now, as I said, I'm in favor of an oversight committee, and I think whoever's on it should not be on the payroll. It should be a volunteer thing to oversee this because, you know, if you get somebody that's on the same salary as the people they're reprimanding, you get, can't help but say they're compromised. Thank you for your time.
Our next resident is, looks like Dennis Pushkar.
Close enough, you did a lot better this week.
I try, sorry.
Yeah. Dennis Pushkar, 930 Castleview, directly affected by the Roden Plan that we're talking about. I have nothing more to add now than I have on all the other meetings that I've spoke. Thank you for listening, and I want to thank each of you when you cited, you know, we need to table this, we need to wait because of safety, safety, safety. My two concerns, like everybody else that's sitting back here, safety and water runoff. It seems like, you know, the safety thing, everybody's trying to work around it, and, you know, this answer and that answer, but I don't know that it's going to solve everything, but nobody seems to want to address the water issue. And I think our first resident speaker here did an excellent job talking about the steepness of Lindenwood, and those of us that are located by Lindenwood, it's a serious concern. We are all affected after Buna Vista started their blasting. Something changed in the water table, and it's a big concern of ours is the water. Safety and water. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next resident is Selena Henderson. Ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Selena Henderson. I'm a resident of 966 Altman Street, and I'm here to speak to you regarding the Roden subdivision. I have prefaced this every meeting I've come to talk, and I will preface it again. I'm a project manager. I deal civil engineering, zoning, and permitting. I work with clients like Roden Subdivision and Moronda Homes every single day. The thing about these types of clients is that they will not stop until they get the go, had to go. go ahead to go and build. My neighbors and I have raised concerns about this subdivision since September of twenty twenty-three. Originally, the plan was denied for obvious reasons, safety, traffic impact to the neighborhood, the issues with the turnpike expansion project and flooding concerns. At the October seventh planning commission meeting, I was informed by the Gateway Engineers that they had reduced the originally proposed seventy homes to forty-nine homes just to avoid your township ordinance of traffic studies for any houses or any subdivision with under fifty houses. North Huntington did require the traffic impact study, which shortly, which occurred shortly after. The required for a Saturday study was neglected and a crew had to be sent back out. However, North Huntington felt that the total six hours studied was sufficient to say the residents will not be impacted. Is it a joke? You have to be kidding. Another safety point, the chief of police, Chief Rizzo, even stated that he didn't think this was a safe idea without another form of access. He said it would be the same issue that Dartmoor Estates is experiencing. It is too difficult for emergency personnel to access that area of the neighborhood. Let's also take into account that we do not have sidewalks that vehicles can park on like Dartmoor Estates does. For over twenty years, our neighbors have been told that a bus stop could not be added on Castle View Drive due to the turn radius issues. Over the multiple meetings I have attended for this subdivision, North Huntington Township indicated that Norland School District agreed and would sign up to do a bus stop at Lindenwood and Castle View with a three-point turnaround. I spoke with Mr. Rod Stewart, Norland's Director of Transportation, and turns out he never actually said this. He said it was a possibility. He also was not aware of the steep slope change when I spoke with him today. I raised my concerns of the elevation change to the proposed eleven hundred and thirty feet at the intersection of Lindenwood and Norwick to the existing elevation on Castle View as ten hundred and seventy feet. He stated there would likely be, not be able to be, he stated they likely would not be able to make that three-point turnaround due to the elevation change and that they would need to have another dot on the back of the bus to ensure backup clearance. So I hate to say you guys did lie to us. He did state that if there were fences in the way along Castle View Drive, that there would be absolutely no way to make this, make this happen. So neighbors on Castle View, I encourage you to put fences in your front yard. So let's talk about the turnpike. I contacted the Turnpike Commission, spoke with Mr. Joe Defior, which is the project manager of the expansion project. He stated multiple times that they cannot confirm the right of way provided to the Gateway Engineers and cannot confirm if a noise study would be required. So imagine this, these new homes are built, say eight years later, residents are told their homes need to be demolished for this turnpike expansion. On the other hand, the turnpike doesn't end up needing to demolish any homes. Who in their right mind want their backyard to be the turnpike? Lastly, let's talk about the flooding issues that residents on Castle View are already facing. I was able to submit a right to no request to get all the planning documents for the Villas of Buena Vista located at Altman Street and Gina Drive, and I found all the stormwater reports to be quite interesting. In each one, they stated that the patio homes were on a steep incline that slopes downward in all four directions. There are residents on Castle View Drive that incurred hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of water damage, yet Schuster wasn't responsible because their performance bond was released and North Huntington didn't do anything. So here we are again believing that the stormwater management studies conducted for the Roden subdivision are accurate and tell the whole picture, when in fact it doesn't. It tells the story of that, just that parcel of land. It does not take into account the homes on Castle View Drive. This will end up being the same issue as Buena Vista where all four sides will slope downward and into the backyards of residents on Castle View. I will continue to ask you all, please consider the current residents of North Huntington. Think about your families, your children and maybe even your grandchildren. Would you want the turnpike to be less than approximately a hundred and fifty feet from your back door? Board of Commissioners, please say no. Do not allow Roden Enterprises and Moronda Homes to pressure you by lawsuits. The chief of police has stated this isn't safe, so how could you possibly vote yes in good conscience? Thank you.
Our next resident is Dan Conwell. I ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Dan Conwell. We reside at nine eighty Castle View Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to one final time voice our concerns for the proposed Roden Plan. Many representatives from Altman Farms have expressed major concerns with this plan for over a year, but yet we are still here talking about the same issues. As you have heard many times over the course of the proposal, these are legitimate concerns. A quick review of some major concerns. Water damage. We have seen it occur in the most recent construction of the Buena Vista Plan, and this would be an even bigger risk with water and the removal of trees and the tremendous movement of the existing landscape. Noise. The increase in noise not only from the neighborhood traffic, but the expansion of the turnpike will also add to the increase with no sound wall being proposed. And as mentioned earlier, who would purchase a home where their backyard would be within reaching distance of the turnpike when expanded? A second entrance. Brusho Road was immediately removed as an option because of the terrain. The slope proposed through Lindenwood is higher and was an option to have an entrance from Gina Drive ever seriously considered. Traffic. The increase in traffic in the neighborhood will almost double and that's not taking into account the use of Altman and Fifth as a cut through already. And busing. As mentioned previously, the Norland School District busing procedures does not allow a bus to enter into a cul-de-sac. Why is Castle View Drive so special to have this changed? A new housing plan must be at least ninety percent completed before a new stop is considered. So then we must consider the walking distance that students will have when they exceed one half mile. New stops may be established only if there is a five hundred feet visibility on a straight and level roadway or seven hundred feet visibility on a hill or curve. And new stops may not be established on a hill if there is a concern that traffic or the bus itself would not be able to stop in adverse weather. And finally, safety. Emergency responses to this area, there is only one way in and one way out. If there is a major emergency, access to this area would be extremely limited. And from the very beginning, Police Chief Rizzo minced no words that this would not be beneficial at all for emergency responses and routine patrol. Please listen once again to all the current residents who have been living here and seriously consider our major concerns for the safety and well-being of our neighborhood. If there is any question or concern in any of your minds regarding our concerns with this plan, then the answer should be a definite no. Thank you for your time and sincere consideration of all of our concerns. Thank you.
Our next resident is Dustin Logue. I ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Dustin Logue. I reside at two one four four Robin Hood Drive. And before I begin, I want to make it clear that my presence here tonight is not on behalf of the United States federal government or any organizations or unions I'm affiliated with. I'm speaking solely as a concerned lifelong citizen of North Huntington here of my own accord. So I will keep this brief as I only have two questions for the Board of Commissioners tonight. First, are there any updates on the investigation into the accusation that Nolan Mullen brandished a firearm at first responders following the vehicle accident on July seventh, twenty twenty-four, one near Indian Lake? And aside from that, based on my understanding of the incident, the details do not align with the charges filed or lack thereof. I must express my disappointment with the low level of transparency surrounding this case. I find this to be very concerning. If all protocols and procedures were properly followed at this incident, then the North Huntington Township and police force should have nothing to hide. So my second question is whether the board has even reviewed this body cam and dash cam footage, which I personally have faced difficulties obtaining. I believe doing so would very easily prove whether or not this accusation, which was recently brought to light, is true or not. I hope you can answer these two simple questions tonight. And on a side note, as a citizen of this community, I would also like to voice my staunch support towards the formation of a police oversight committee. Thank you for your time.
Our next resident is April Punzac. I ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is April Punzac. I'm at nine one one Castle View Drive, which is directly across from Lindenwood. A few months ago, my daughter and I came and we spoke at the planning committee meeting. We spoke about two themes and they were responsibility and common sense. So as far as the Roden subdivision goes, obviously, those are the two main points that we had. But I feel that the planning committee didn't even take anything into account. They just looked at the boxes. If those were checked, then they passed it on to you guys and just bucked the responsibility. So they're saying, okay, we're just going to wash our hands of it and now it's up to you guys. So we're asking you, please have common sense. Please don't pass the buck. Please stop it. Responsibility. As far as the busing goes, my kids now go to Queen of Angels, but they were at Norwin for many years. When they were at Norwin, they were always complaining, there's too many kids in the bus. They were already crowded. Sometimes there were four to a seat. They were at the Fifth and Altman bus stop. There is video footage, I didn't quite know how to get it to you guys, not at the Fifth and Altman, but further down Altman that some of our neighbors have of a car just blowing right through when the bus has its red lights on. So the bus stop is very concerning. And my kids don't take that bus anymore, but we have a responsibility for all of our neighbors. I'm concerned about not only my kids, but all the kids in our neighborhood. So please think of them. Just one other thing that I wanted to add is that, you know, you can do this, but if you do, we feel that then you're considering profits over people. You're more worried about the threat of the lawsuit than somebody getting hurt. So please consider. Thank you for your time.
Our next resident is Josh Corcoran. I ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Josh Corcoran at eight ten Castle View Drive. So a famous quote from the commissioners here, Mr. Higginson's not here tonight, but he said, if you want your backyards to stay wooded by the woods. And I hope that's a statement that potential residents of North Huntington take to heart. But the thing about it is that we actually, from Altman Farms, understand that. We're not here asking for a guarantee of a preview behind our houses. We know we're not entitled to a view. If we were, we would probably have fought hard for the Buena Vista crew to not have a view of Walmart. But we're also not entitled to the sound of falling asleep to owls or waking up to a family at Deer Yard. We understand land behind our homes can change, but what we are entitled to is a safe neighborhood. We're entitled to yards that don't flood because the proposed development accepts the minimum standards and turns its cheek to real world scenarios. We're entitled to the same safety procedures for school bus routes that every other neighborhood but ours would have to adhere to. We're entitled to a government that respects and heeds the advice of its police chief, who warned that previous proposed developments were unsafe due to traffic congestion and the strain on emergency services. We're entitled to a government that understands when the turnpike commission insists they would tear down existing developments or proposed expansions, they mean it, even when a developer insists they're designed for the worst case scenario. We're entitled to representatives that won't change their decisions based on a threat of lawsuits because they would know it would create a system that would require every future neighborhood to secure representation at the outset of the zoning process. The North Huntington Comprehensive Plan is a promise to its residents that growth will be managed responsibly. It prioritizes infrastructure that can handle new development, public safety and maintaining the character of our neighborhood. Approving the subdivision that may meet zoning criteria but ignores these core principles breaks that promise. This isn't about preserving someone's view. It's about preserving our community's safety, quality of life and our trust in local government. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for the township to do what it's supposed to do, to listen to, represent and protect its citizens. We ask you to reaffirm your oath tonight by voting against the Roden subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next resident is Michael Kowalski. I ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Kowalski, one ninety McMahon Drive. First of all, I'd like to say I don't think we should have any new housing plans in this township. I think we already had too many people in this township and thirty's getting just as bad as twenty-two up in Marysville and Morellville, if not worse. And classrooms are bursting at the seams. We don't need any more people in this township. But the reason why I'm here is today, because last time I was here, a civilian review board of the police department came up. And I know there wasn't a consensus, didn't go anywhere, but I wanted to say something before it gained any more traction, specifically because some of the great commissioner, some of you, great otherwise, seem to think it was a good idea and I just wanted to provide a different perspective into the idea. It's a horrible idea. Civilian review boards are the communist and they're socialist and a model of inefficiency. They are bureaucratic. Saul Alinsky and Karl Marx would have loved the idea of civilian review boards. And in fact, if you looked at Saul Alinsky's book for articles, I'm sure he would have loved it. Civilian review boards would be part of that. But the thing is, is what would it look like? How many people would be on it? Where are these people come from? And how much are you going to pay them? Because you have to pay them. They're not going to do it for free. And you have to pay them to keep them honest. And all civilian review boards do is just breed more corruption. So because people like the version of powerful, people like this Nolan Mullen kid, he never would have charged in the first place if civilian review board had anything to say about it. They do nothing to reduce any perceived issues in a police department and because they are a bureaucracy, they don't protect anyone. It would quickly become a board of unallowed people doing special favors for others. Most civilians don't understand police procedure and most barely even understand basic Bill of Rights and the Constitution. They like to cherry pick the Constitution, but they ignore other things that are convenient for them, like the Fourth Amendment and Sixth Amendment, due process. A lot of people, a lot of civilians tend to ignore due process when they're going through hyper emotionalism. I grew up in Jeanette. There was a constant cycle of people complaining about the police not doing enough. And the police get out and they do more and they start complaining about the police doing too much. Officer Kukic is a perfect example of that. He was, he was asked to look into complaints about UTVs riding around a residential area, which is in a fluent area, and then he went up, warned some people, they ignored those warnings. So what did he do? He went up and cited people and they complained about getting cited. So all civilian review board would do is just create more corruption. And I'm sure there are people behind me Googling who I am. I'll save you the research. Yes, I am a state trooper, the Pennsylvania State Police in Greensburg Barracks. I'm not against civilian review boards because I'm a police officer. I'm against it because I'm against communism and socialism. Thank you.
Our next resident is Nicholas Carosa. I ask you to come and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Nick Carosa. I reside in North Huntington. Really, the only thing I wanted to say tonight is I definitely stand with the members of this area where, you know, there's this bill about to happen. My family's accident couldn't be handled properly, as well as a lot of other accidents. I mean, the incident report isn't even accurate to count. I don't know if we ever got that corrected to show an accident in July, but I'm all about growth. I'm all about building. I understand how townships work. I know how property values play a role. I understand, you know, the importance of these things, but they can't come before the safety of the residents. How can we in good conscience build anything until we hit timeout? Let's reassess what we have going on. Let's get it to a level of excellence and then let's start building again. You know, there was, there was in two thousand and sixteen, the intersection where my family's accident happened at was discussed as a problem accident at one of these meetings. All this stuff's online. They acknowledged another bad accident at Brokers and Clay Pike. And then in two thousand and eighteen, they did a safety audit. And it was the responsibility in this audit of both Westmoreland County and North Huntington Township, because that's what I've heard a lot about that intersection is that, well, it's a count, well, no, it was our responsibility too to either put a four-way stop light or stop sign or a no left turn. Had that have been done in two thousand and eighteen, maybe the accident wouldn't have happened. And since their accident, there was another accident there involving injuries. You know, we got a lot of kids, you know what I mean? This is a big district. I just don't see how we can build- I just don't see how we can build anything until we address the traffic issues we already have. As far as the Public Oversight Committee, I understand that that's a conception that most people have, that it's this like, let's go fight the police, but it's not. It's so that when citizens who would have less resources, less understanding of maybe, as it was stated before me, what their rights are, which due process is the Fourteenth Amendment, not the Sixth, that they have a place to go where they can, where they can, you know, other community members can help them. That would have done me so, I would have saved you guys a lot of hearing from me, I can guarantee you that, emails, hundreds of emails, Harry, me and you. I wouldn't even have to talk to you. I could have went and talked to the Oversight Committee, and part of the Oversight Committee's job is going to be to tell people, you don't got nothing here. Life's unfair. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. They can be dickheads sometimes. They got a tough job. It's not to, let's defund the, that's never been my, my goal. I want law and order. I have elderly family members. I'm going to be elderly one day. I understand the importance of safety and protection. The grievance comes in when that's not being delivered. And I know that my situation is my situation, but I have to be honest with you guys. My social media account won't stop. Our citizens are terrified, and that's not okay. We have a ton of people out there that have things they'd like to talk about where they were wrong, their ideas where they think they could make our community a better place, and they're scared to death. That's not America. That's, that's not a constitutional republic. And I have to say, and then I'm done, nothing against you, Ron, but you're tied to the District Attorney's Office. There's no way this county can handle the investigation that's being asked for. You have ties to the Pennsylvania State Police. Maybe their Internal Affairs Division, maybe you don't have any ties in there. You're the treasurer of some committee too, or you're not some republic, so like, you're a big guy in Westmoreland County. I just don't see how an investigation can be done by anything other than a third-party agency. And thank you for your time. Again, as I close, you really shouldn't let them take us to court, but at least the citizens will feel like you had their back and you fought. And, you know, I don't have an issue, and maybe other people don't agree, but I don't care how much money we spend fighting for the citizen of this township. We got to spend money to go to court, let's spend the money and go to court. But as it was stated, you guys, really, your primary focus should be representing what the citizens want. We want safer streets, we want more transparency, and we want to stop building until we can get everything we've already got going under control. Thank you for having me.[780.04][780.04](APPLAUSE).
Just time to move to responses, citizens' input. We had a few on the Rodent subdivision, which is later on on the agenda. If anyone would like to address that now. Break the wait. The wait? Okay.
I also want to make a statement. At this time, North Huntington reviewed the allegations raised by Mr. Carosa at the last meeting on January, I believe, ninth, 2025. It was at the work session. It has been reviewed and has been determined to be unfounded. And that's all I have.
Any other commissioner have anything for citizens' input? No.
The Oversight Committee, anybody want to comment on that? I mean, I agree with the last gentleman that spoke. I'm not in favor of an Oversight Committee of citizens, because we are the Oversight Committee. The commissioners are. And if we're not doing our job, get rid of us. That's all there is to it. If you have to get rid of one, two, that's not supportive, do it. But we were elected by you to represent you, and we do, at least I do, and I believe others on the board, take our job seriously. And we oversee the police department, we oversee public works, we oversee administration, Harry and that group. If we're not doing our job, you have an election this year, every, every two years. Get rid of us. You run for the office. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Gray.
And yes, obviously, I agree. I spoke against a review board last meeting, and I still stand by my word. I think that's a terrible idea. And again, as both commissioners said, we are the review board. We are a part of the discipline process. If a citizen makes a complaint against a police officer, we are a part of that process. We do review it.
Ladies and gentlemen, dear or not, I'm going to agree with all the commissioners. I overspoke. I'm a human being, just like we're all out there. Just like Commissioner Gray stated, we are the review board for our township. So I'm going to retract what I said. I'm not in favor of what I've researched on police review boards. I've done a lot of research from the last meeting to this meeting. And basically, from everything that I have read, with police review boards, they have one in Pittsburgh, I'm against it, totally against that part. I would love to bring our citizens together with our police. I have annual first responder events, annual events yearly, and this year is going to be remarkable with two big events coming up. Bring our citizens together with our first responders. And I'm going to, I'm going to say this, as a human being, I made a mistake. I didn't research it before I said it. So I'm going to retract what I said. And in favor of us, we are the review board for our township. So hopefully, you forgive me for that. If not, just like Commissioner Gray said, I'd be happy to vote for you in three years that I have left on this board. If you want to come up and sit in my spot, you're more than welcome. I feel that I'm going to serve the community for the best that I can serve the community as I am.
So a lot of great things have been said. It really has. Mr. Kowalski, I did not know that what you claim is civilian review board as Marxist. And if you'll allow me, I've done and served 31 years in United States military. I am a combat veteran. I served with the Fourth Infantry Division. My unit captured Saddam Hussein. I am airborne, air assault, and I am a sniper. I used to be enlisted, then became an officer. And in my 31 years, I have never, nor will I ever, support Solomensky, Marxism, Socialism, Communism. I hate those types of government. I despise those kind of people that push that kind of crap into anybody's mind. It's a shame that people are allowed to speak of such things, but we live in a society that is free to make, you know, the First Amendment, freedom of speech. But by no means does this guy, this soldier, this township commissioner, support any form of Marxism at all. I really just felt that Mrs. Lewandowski and the others that wanted to bring together an organization, I thought, okay, it sounds reasonable, it sounds logical, and I bought it. I'm not saying in that, in a negative sense. I do believe in a form of checks and balance. And maybe that's what I viewed the Oversight Committee as, a form of checks and balance. But I hope that you folks understand that by no means, never in a million years would I ever support Marxism, Socialism, Communism. They are despicable forms of government. They have murdered more people than you can even ever imagine. And there's three knuckleheads that employ Marxism and Socialism. Adolf Hitler, six to eight million Jews and Poles murdered. Joseph Stalin, communist, anywhere between 40 to 80 million murdered at his hand, communist. And Mao Zedong, the worst of them all, 100 to 200 million people murdered by him. And if anybody thinks that communism is beautiful, man, you better get yourself admitted, because I don't know what in God's name you're thinking. But that's where I come from. So, thank you.
One other comment I'd like to make. Somebody mentioned that people are terrified or afraid to come up or file a complaint. I don't know, maybe people weren't comfortable coming to everyone on the board, but I will tell you, many years that I've served here, I have had a lot of people come to me in private asking different questions about the police department. Most of them go away once you realize, or explain to you what their job actually is, what their powers are, what we can do and what we cannot do, and what the citizens' rights are. Most of them go away. There have been a few that we, we actually looked into. They were unfounded, as near as I can remember, there were some that were. But yeah, I, you can always go to somebody on this board without fearing anything. So, that's it. You can always go to the chief. If you're not comfortable with him, then you come to us. That's all. Thank you.
Any other commissioner have anything for citizens' input? Seeing none, approval of minutes for our special meeting on December 12th of 2024?
Motion to approve.
The motion by Commissioner Zona, second by Commissioner Gray. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero for a regular meeting from December 18th of 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Zona, second by Commissioner Hempel. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Payment of bills. I'll make a motion that we pay voucher number 36948 through voucher number 38424.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Hempel and the second by Commissioner Bevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Staff reports, Public Works Department, Director Hocklinski, do you have anything else to add to your report tonight?
No, not much to add to the report. I just wanted to thank the residents for your patience. We do the best we can. And I want to thank our guys. We've got a group of really devoted, really hardworking guys. And when it's our time to shine, it's more and most visible, and we're doing our best.
Just want to take a moment to recognize that you guys do an incredible job. Our township boards are usually the best roads in the township, and I couldn't be happier with, with the service that we provide with our roads.
Can the commissioner have anything else for Director Hocklinski?
Yeah, I'll second that, John. You talk to people from other townships, and they say, as soon as I got to the North Huntington line, it was clear. I, just the other day, I think it was yesterday, that afternoon storm we had. So many people told me later in the day, and today even, that as soon as they came into North Huntington, everything was clear. So your guys do a good job, and thank them. And if there's such a thing as thirting something, I'm going to thurd that, what Mr. Atwood said and what Mr. Zona said. John, I'm telling you, you and your crew, man, brother, fantastic, superb job. Please extend our gratitude and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Any other have anything for Director Hocklinski? Moving on to Parks and Recreation, Coordinator Kincaid, do you have anything to add to your report tonight, ma'am?
I just wanted to point out that with all the snow, we have a snowman contest. So any resident of the township can submit their snowman that they've made with all the snow. From now until February 28th, the snowman will be accepted. We have three categories you can enter into the competition under funniest, biggest, and community spirit snowman. So hopefully, you guys go out, build some snowmen, and submit it. Thank you.
Any commissioners have anything for Coordinator Kincaid?
Lady, I just got to say, I commend you for your, your spirit. It's a breath of fresh air. I love what you're doing for the community, and thank you, and please keep it up.
Any other commissioners have anything? Thank you. Police report, Chief Frizzo?
I have nothing to add to the report.
Commissioner have anything for Chief Frizzo tonight?
Chief, if I could, I just wanted to add something, not to your report, but add, get something on the record. I think it's important to let the citizens know what our police are doing. And I have the stats from, and I know you're aware of them, chief, from Norwegian Five, Westmoreland County Drug Task Force that works here in Westmoreland County. You have several officers from our department on there. This is their stats for the year 2024. They made 115 undercover drug buys. They made 118 drug arrests. They seized over $150,000, and they also seized over 68 guns that they got off the street of Westmoreland County. That's just for Westmoreland County. That's huge. They got large amounts of heroin, fentanyl, cocaine, crack cocaine, marijuana, meth, oxy cotton, among other drugs. So it's very huge what that, what those officers are doing. I think that's a testament to the high caliber officers we do have in this, in this county. So thank those officers, and thank you for your leadership.
Absolutely. Well, I'll pass it along. We're very active in the, in the task force.
Yes.
Anybody else have anything for Chief Frizzo? Emergency Management Report, Coordinator Mahinsky, do you have anything to add to your report tonight, sir?
Nothing additional.
Any commissioners have anything for Coordinator Mahinsky? Thank you. Engineering Report, Mr. Grabiak, over there now. Do you have anything to add to your report tonight, sir?
Nothing additional.
No? Any commissioners have anything for Mr. Grabiak?
I do, if I may. Ward seven, infrastructure is a tough, would you say it's your toughest ward?
Probably.
All right. And when we say tough, we don't mean that in a good sense, that, hey, man, that thing's tough. It's a rough, topographically, it's a challenge. And so that brings me to Scotch Hill Road. Would you be willing to update us on what's going on up there, please?
Yeah, so the contractor is actually supposed to start out there on Monday with the stormwater improvement project.
And what will, what will their actions be? What are they doing?
So they're installing inlets up from 993 going up Scotch Hill to take the stormwater that we dump currently down to Frog Road and take it straight down the road to the stream.
Fantastic. So what we're basically saying in a nutshell is those inlets will aid in mitigating the water that is saturating the folks on Frog Road.
Yes.
Into the, directly into the stream and taking it out of their backyard.
Yes.
Outstanding. Thank you.
I have one more question for you, Mr. Grabiak. In your report, in the, actually, it's from KU Resources report, it just stated here under the Kendadaam Indian Lake Project that there was possibly a meeting recently. Did you have, it said possibly, I think it said yesterday, that there was a meeting to discuss some?
Yes. So we did meet to discuss many different projects that we were talking about there, the bridge beam replacements, the dredging of the creek, or I'm sorry, dredging of the lake, and then some various improvements around the lake.
Okay. Will be a prize of those in the future of?
Uh, yeah, we're hoping for 2026, but we'll see what the money has.
Thank you.
You know, if we dredge Indian Lake, you guys know that Oak Island was like the number one show for what, last how many years in a row? And I'm not trying to be a funny guy, but I am going to be funny. I wonder if we'll get our own show. Find something there at the bottom of Indian Lake. Is that man-made? Or is that natural?
I believe it is man-made.
Man-made. Okay. All right. Maybe we might still wind up with our own show. Thanks.
Any other have anything for Mr. Grabiak? Any other things for Mr. Grabiak? Thank you, sir. Moving on to Community Development, Director Andrikovich, do you have anything to add to your report tonight, sir?
Yeah, I have nothing further to add to the report. We do still have the one outstanding item, S thirteen twenty twenty-four, the Roden subdivision. Board action to approve the Roden subdivision located off Castle View. The Planning Commission voted five to one in approval of this subdivision.
So, at this point, I would like to ask for a motion to remove from the table.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion by Commissioner Haggis and a second by Commissioner Zona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So, wait a second. I'm a little confused. What are we?
Removing it from the table.
Removing the Roden subdivision from the table so we can discuss it.
Okay. Discuss it as in later today?
Yeah, as in right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Motion, motion carries seven zero. Believe we are seeking a motion to approve the Roden subdivision. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I speak briefly?
You can do adjourned discussion.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have an opportunity. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
If a motion by Commissioner Haggis and a second by Commissioner Zona. All those, no, time for discussion. At this point, I would like to recognize Chief Rizzo to offer any type of input on this from a safety concern.
Thank you. So, obviously, I know a lot of people here. Dan and Randy's over here in the corner. I know a lot of people that live in the plan. I know people here. Mr. Plonco and I spoke. I spoke on this when it was a lot more hope than what it was. And I'm not changing my position as how I feel about it. Now, I will say this. I know they have a difficult decision, and it's never easy when the plan is standing in front of them. My safety concerns have not changed. My, I went back, I reviewed the current plan, I looked at it. I actually, actually even got the traffic study or the safety study, whatever it was that they did, and I looked at it. And, you know, I looked at the trips per day, and I know I spoke before about Dartmoor and the issues that we had over there, and that Phase One, and working with all those people down on Phase One, and particularly, they had one gentleman who kind of led the charge over there. And, you know, it took a lot of resources from my department, the township. We spent, you know, we spent a great deal of time over there doing traffic mitigation and trying to, trying to reduce speed and trying to make people pay attention. We couldn't do anything about their volume of traffic. There was just nothing we could do. But we did a lot for them to try to get them to a point, and we still have a little bit more to do. I feel like the same thing we're going to be dealing with on Castle View. And I just want to make sure that you're, this board is completely aware. Looking at the concerns tonight, they're still my concerns. You know, I think that it's calling for five hundred and twenty-four weekly, or daily, weekday trips. I'm correct? Is that sound correct, Mr. Plonco? Okay, so, that, the vast majority of those trips are going to occur in a very short period, a very short area of roadway, basically from Lindenwood over to Fifth and Altman. Now, when you get over to Fifth and Altman, those trips are going to disperse. People are going to go straight, people are going to go left, people are going to go right, depending upon where they're going to go. But it's going to disperse the traffic throughout the plan. But Castle View bears the brunt, and the people over there are going to bear the brunt. And I know, I mean, and if the plan goes through, or if you vote yes or no, and it goes to court and it gets appealed, or whatever happens, it's not going to change the fact if it does go in, we're going to have to deal with Castle View. You know, there's going to have to be mitigation, traffic enforcement, speed signs, speed enforcement, not to mention, I mean, you know, over there, you have a double cul-de-sac going off a double cul-de-sac. I can't speak about the school district. I don't know the rules and regulations on the school buses. I know Mr. Conwell has a long history with the school district and probably knows more than me when it comes to the district and how their busing works. So, I can't, I can't speak to that. But I did want to make sure that the people in Altman Farms know that my position has not changed. I still support that I don't like the plan. It doesn't mean that it doesn't meet the criteria to get approved. It just means I don't like it. And I still can't change my opinion, even though the plan numbers were reduced. I know that my department will have to put resources over there to help the people of Castle View if this does happen. And the township most likely will have to spend money in traffic mitigation, speed signage, maybe transverse rumble strips between views now throughout the township, line painting, additional signage, and things of that nature, which is going to have a bare cost on the township on the back end. So, to the board, I know it's a tough decision. I just wanted to make sure you understand where we come from and the things that are going to happen if it passes either here or at the county level, or whatever happens, these are still problems that we're going to have to deal with. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Rizzo. I actually have two questions.
We're still in discussing mode, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so you can see. So, the, I heard a lot about a water issue, and water issues coming, arising from the building of the Buena Vista Plan. My first question is to, I guess, Harry or your staff. What's going on with this water issue? Is this something that's been reported to us? Have we looked into this at all?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have any reported water concerns over on Buena Vista. Do you know, Cody? Have we had anything recently?
On Castle View coming down from Buena Vista?
Nothing has came in to me. I don't know about anything prior.
My second question is regarding, I can't read my notes, I'm sorry. Does any other commissioner have anything while I try to look at this? I'm sorry.
I just have a question on the school district. Did someone on the, for the township, talk to the school district about the busing issue? And can we just get a clarification of that?
Yeah, Ryan talked to Rod Stewart about the?
And what was said? If you can just?
Yeah, I talked with Rod at least three times, and he said, he read the school policy, and the buses are not to turn around in a cul-de-sac, meaning they physically can't turn around in the widened pavement of the cul-de-sac. Doesn't mean they can't go on a street that has a cul-de-sac. So, when this plan was proposed, looking over with Jim Varner and Rod, they recommended a three-point turn at one of the T intersections because there's other three-point turn bus stops throughout the township. So, he said it's not ideal, but they would adapt.
So, they said they would be able to accommodate that?
Yes.
Can I add something besides both of them today? If you wasn't able to?
The time for citizens' input has passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Does any, any other commissioner have anything?
Yeah, I do. So, I linked up the other day, Sunday, with three fine gentlemen. Ken Plonco, Bill Benno, and Josh Corkin. I took some photographs. May we please have them?
Let me see if I can. These photographs.
You can enlarge that, please. All right, see the guy down there with his hands saying touchdown? That's Mr. Ken Plonco. If to your right, down in the shrubbery, is Bill Benno. Both gentlemen are here tonight. Now, what you don't see is you don't see Josh because we would meet Josh down below. The distance, that's me taking the photograph, of which you cannot see, between me and Mr. Plonco, is roughly about sixty, maybe seventy feet. That hillside is almost the length of a football field. Elevation is in excess of ninety to ninety-five to ninety-six feet. If you do the math, and Mr. Benno did, you saw the angle. It is severe. According to my notes, the angle at Bushy Run would have been twenty-two degrees, and at Lindenwood, it's thirty-four degrees. Lindenwood is the proposed ingress egress route. Now, you see all that beautiful trees on left and right side? And a lot of those are going to get cut out. They're going to have to for them to build. You know what trees do to soil? They keep it static in place. They help fight against erosion. They help fight water pouring down over the hillside. Please keep that footage up, would you?
Yeah, I was going to put the other one.
Thank you. And there's another photo. Folks, I'm telling you to take a look at that angle. Look at the severity of that angle. They're already getting water in their backyard, and they've got the insurance companies that you guys know as well as I do are in the business of making money. I got nothing against making money. I am a capitalist, I will tell you that. But I do not believe in raking people over the coals or putting myself into a position where I deny some people because it's not profitable enough for me. That's called greed. That's called, I don't give a crap about my fellow men. It's about lining one's pockets. I am not for that, but I am a capitalist. Things have to be done right. They really, really do. Mr. Carosa, you spoke eloquently about that, bringing people together and making sure that we embrace excellence. This is not excellence. In good conscience, gang, I'm telling you, we were up there for over an hour?
Yes.
Closer to two hours. And then Josh joined us down below. I cannot support this. I cannot. And I might want to remind everybody in the zoning website, Article Two, Section two oh two, Article Nine, Section Nine, and Article Five, Section five oh four. This board has every right to deny this bill. Whether we're being threatened by their lawyers or not, they can file a bill and go to a higher board about it. But we fight for you guys. And that is our job. And I don't care what corporation threatens us and says, I'm going to sue you if you don't do what I tell you in the name of progress. Progress is the board of commissioners supporting its citizens. That is the progress I signed on for. Consider this. Please vote no. I know I am.
Do you have any further discussion on this matter?
This is a tough one. I'll say that. The residents raised a lot of good issues, but there's too many for me to address. But there are a few that I can comment on. Somebody said, you don't have streetlights. Well, you could. We could make that happen, right? Okay. But you would pay for them. But we could make that happen. Somebody asked, why didn't Schuster or Ryan Holmes build there? We can't answer that. Did you ask them? We can't answer that. Flood insurance. You can't get flood insurance because you don't live in a flood plain. When you live, one side of Castle View is up against the hillside. I was there. All the water comes down that hillside to your backyards. I know that. I live at the bottom of a hill, too. That's what water does. It runs to the lowest point. You say something changed when Buena Vista was built? We don't know that. I can't tell, I can't address that one. But flood insurance is for water that comes up from a stream, a waterway, a river, whatever. Water coming down, whether it's down from the sky or the rain, running off the hill, you can't get insurance, flood insurance for that. So, somebody said, who would buy a home close to the turnpike? I don't know. A first-time homebuyer, buyer, young and naive, maybe? I made mistakes when I bought my home, but there will, there will be people that buy You know that. They may regret it and sell later when the turnpike is built, expands, whatever. Though again, like Eric said, that's capitalism. If you have something to sell, people can buy it if it's priced appropriately. The other thing is, somebody said it's profits over people. It's not about profits over people, to us, anyway. It's about property rights. And you own property, most of you, I assume, the developer is purchasing property from the owner, they have rights, too. So, we don't have an emotional interest in this. You do. We have a business decision to make. We know that if we deny it, they will appeal it and go to court. And I know some of you want us to do that. And I'm kind of tempted to, but this is a hard one for the board, at least for me, because I sympathize with you. But we also know that it meets our ordinances. They did the traffic study. They did the water plan, I forget what it's called. But they did everything that we require. So, we really have no choice but to approve it. Even though you may not like it, somebody may not challenge the qualifications of the engineers, but they're certified. Do you have a certified, maybe the one does, speaker tonight does, but our hands are tied, in my opinion. I'm going to be forced to approve it.
According to Articles Two, Section two oh two, Article Nine, Section Nine, Article Five, Section five oh four, our hands are not tied. They are not tied. You have a premier safety gentleman in amongst you, Chief Rizzo. I'm going to tell you, probably nobody else in this room has probably better safety in mind than him. You've heard him very, very loud and clear, ladies and gentlemen, very loud and clear. I support everything Chief Rizzo was saying. If this is a major safety issue, and I may like to add one caveat, I have a safety degree from the University of Alabama, real tide, compliments to United States Army. I'm against this because of my safety degree at the University of Alabama, real tide.
I just have, those sections you cited, are they from the zoning code?
Yes.
This has nothing to do with zoning. This is already zoned residential. This has nothing to do with zoning. None of that applies.
That's not true. If you read it, you will see it.
This isn't a zoning issue. This falls under the Seldo. Am I correct?
I believe those sections that you're referring to are out of the zoning ordinance, and they are pertaining to if somebody's asking for variance to property or, you know, if they're looking for some kind of relief, the zoning hearing board is able to deny that based on safety and the, you know, safety of the residents and stuff.
Well, they didn't because all they did was ask the box, and if the box was checked, they'd pass it on. But you still had one individual from the Planning and Zoning Commission vote against it.
Yeah, this, that was.
Here's, let me just say this.
It's two separate boards, though.
Let me just say this. You ever hear of somebody putting a cart before the horse? You guys ever hear that? Yeah, it doesn't work. So, why didn't the developer come first here and then see if they could do it? Instead, they went and bought it, then now they're asking for forgiveness. You know the, you know that old saying? It's better to ask for forgiveness. You know the, you know, they got old saying, it's better to ask for forgiveness than it is permission. I believe you guys did that. You bought that property and what you should have done, and then you come here and then you ask for permission. Basically, you ask for forgiveness, telling these fine people that, sorry, we're gonna build it anyhow, whether you like it or not. That's putting a cart before the horse. That's asking for forgiveness before you ask for permission. Something needs to be done with builders that they have to come here first to see if it works. And then if it says no, then you guys earn out of your money, and then you're not sitting there with your lawyers threatening me and threatening us with a lawsuit. I don't know what country you guys come from, but where I come from, you don't make threats. You don't threaten people. You serve the people. Not as a form of communism, because I'm gonna say, Mr. Kowalski, I think you hope you know, this guy doesn't like that. Okay? Just as long as we're clear. Where's the consideration of the people that are already established? Come on. My God, man, have compassion. Where is it? They have every right to live in peace, liberty, and happiness, and you guys are taking that away from them if you vote yes. That's all I got.
Any other commissioners have anything? No. So we have a motion in a second. Last for, we'll call...
Read the motion again, please.
The motion is action to approve the Roden subdivision located off Castle View Drive.
Thank you.
We have a go and call, we'll call vote, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel?
No.
Commissioner Haggis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Zona?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevan?
No.
Commissioner Glass?
No.
President Atwood?
The motion fails. Three to four.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I have no further, uh, items this month.
All right, moving on to solicitors' report.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Township managers report, Manager Falk.
Action to approve the December check register. Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Zona, second by Commissioner Bevan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Do you have a copy of the budget report dated December 2024? Are there any questions? I do like to point out that, you know, this is unaudited, but for year end, uh, due to the hard work of our staff, uh, we were over budget by the revenue of about $400,000. And expenditures, we were under budget by about $200,000.
Awesome.
Good job.
Good job.
Absolutely. Good job.
That is a good job.
Item number three, action to approve resolution number 102, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license known as Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board Number 17737 into the township and to be located at Banco Business Park 3000 Commerce Loop, Suite 3201, North Hyington Township, Pennsylvania 15642. Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Zona, a second by Commissioner Hempel. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to advertise ordinance number 2308, setting forth a consolidated schedule of fees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Hempel, a second by Commissioner Bevan. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to advertise ordinance number 2309, affixing various tax rates for the year 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Hempel, a second by Commissioner Zona. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to advertise ordinance number 2310, accepting the dedication to public use certain roads known as Sunday Drive and Alvina Court and the Thomas Farms Acres Plan. Motion to approve.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Zona and a second by Commissioner Hempel. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to approve pay application number one and final to Shawty Landscaping in the amount of $15,050 for the demolition of 8856 Broadway Street. Motion to approve.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Zona, a second by Commissioner Gray. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to approve pay application number two to Costa Contracting in the amount of $74,322 for the 2024 Stormwater Pond Improvement Project Number 2024-07.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Hempel, a second by Commissioner Bevan. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to approve pay application number three to Costa Contracting in the amount of $12,077.33 for the 2024 Stormwater Pond Improvement Project Number 2024-07. Motion to approve.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Zona and a second by Commissioner Gray. Any further discussion?
What is the difference between number two and number three, please?
The timing of the pay application. Every time they submit a pay application, they have to meet certain requirements, so they submitted them consecutively over the break between the last meeting and this meeting.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to approve the release of a letter of credit in the amount of $17,429.72 for the Tuscan Hills Phase Seven grading. Motion to approve.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Zona and a second by Commissioner Hempel. Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Action to award the Rivertown Demolition Project to DJ Demo LLC in the amount of $23,300.
Move. Oh, my God. To her. Oh, no, please. See you later. It's gotta go.
I'll take the motion by Commissioner Gray with the second by Commissioner Glass.
Yes, please.
Any further discussion? All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
That is the end of my report.
At this point, do we have any further board comments? Any announcements?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Zona and a second by Commissioner Hempel. All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, meeting adjourned 8:31 PM.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for all your hard work. No problem. No problem. I heard it. I heard it enough. Thank you. I don't know.